Pursuant to Governor Haley's March twenty nine, two thousand and twenty three.
Meetings in order, folks.
Pursuant to Governor Haley's March twenty nine, two thousand and twenty three revised orders spending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Yeah, chapter thirty eight, section eighteen. Meetings of the Berkshire Hills Medical School District school committee will be conducted both in person and remote from March thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. Agenda items of those recently anticipated by the chair. Not all items solicited may be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion except for made by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and the school committee recorder as well as a virtue added virtue. Once transcribed, the three minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So we'll turn it right over to the superintendent, Peter Robinson.
Yeah, no, thanks. It's good to be back. I appreciate everybody's. Um, so we're gonna start, um, uh, well, let me, let me start this way because I think it makes more sense. I'd like to start with introducing some of the new people who are joining us. Then after we introduce them, uh, then we could go through, uh, some of the roses and thorns which they prepared, which often students do, but because we're in the summer, dark students. So let's start with the elementary school and work our way up. So I'd like to introduce, oh, I should have said this, introduce everybody. As I introduce you, come up to the table because then the camera can see you better and, and pick you, picked up the audio. So as often as my tradition, I start with the elementary school and work our way up. So Betsy, why don't you come up? Betsy Dixon is our great new assistant principal who's joining us.
Moneybrook. Thank you so much.
Yeah, can you share a little bit about what you're doing?
So first of all, I'm very excited to be here. I wanted to thank Cynthia once again for, uh, giving me the opportunity to interview Pierre Barrington at Moneybrook and for Peter for accepting my appointment. So I have about twenty plus years in education. This field is where I started residential community facility in New York for adjudicated youth boys. I said most of mine, I'm in special education, have a master's. I worked in Pitt Field with Dave, under Dave, I should say, which was wonderful. I worked in special education and behavior programs, mostly dealing with and working with kids who struggle with adverse situations in their life, significant trauma and highly aggressive with behavior. I also, a lot of mental health issues, mental health concerns with students. I was on the forefront creating our middle school program after our alternative school closed. And they put everybody back into school so kids could access the general education setting once their behavior was stabilized. So I helped to create that program with a two-tier system, tier two and tier three, where depending on the behavior of the students and the need, they would enter either one of those levels. And the goal was to stabilize behavior and increase academic expectation. And it was the best work I ever did around. And then I proceeded to purposely enter the regular education setting where I just left North Adams, Breland Elementary School. I spent seven years as an E L A teacher and social studies teacher. There I embedded myself in P B I S, on behavior dimension support. I embedded myself in diversity, ethnic inclusion, social justice. It's like a wonderful three-day conference led by Jake, F Al Breland, probably one of the best teams I've ever gone through. As seriously as the standards are changing now with Department of Elementary Center Education around ethnic inclusion and social justice. I led three, uh, I worked at the district level at, uh, in North Adams, training in that area. And I trained elementary schools in diversity, ethnic inclusion, social justice to start the fall rolling. From there, I also was on the informational leadership team. And I then entered the leadership program at C L A with Mary Ann. Outstanding program. I don't think I had worked myself forward without that program. It accelerated one year. I think I wrote more papers in one year than I did in my full internship. But at the end of the day, it's exceptional. It's been five hundred hours of leadership under my principal, both my principal at Breland and the principal at Co-Gro, A D B M, who supported the entry of the program. And I always desired to be a leader and I've always wanted to be in a missionary role, either as a vice principal and hopefully to enter into the principal role eventually. I love elementary. I, I work with students in kindergarten through eighth grade. I do have a love for middle school. Most people don't, but I, I report the inspiration. I really adore that. So I'm really excited to be here. I can't wait to get started. I've been spending time with Cynthia at Moneybrook for the last two and a half weeks getting ready for the fall. I've met a lot of the staff. I can't believe how big your, hoping there or our supply room is. I have literally a supply closet in my last school, so that's a rose, I guess. I haven't had any experience with it yet. The staff has been very welcoming and kind. And I really can't wait for the students to come because that's where I really want to be. So again, thank you all for having me and I recognize Cynthia. I'm really excited about learning how to be a great leader and to help as many students as I can. So thank you.
Great.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thanks.
All right, Jake, come on in.
All right. Hi, everyone. I am Jake McCandless. I'm the principal of the DuBois Regional Middle School. And about a month ago, I was actually thinking that I was maybe going to be heading into retirement. And then Dr. Dillon called me and I suggested if he got to the bottom of the barrel and to go into the dirt that's below the bottom of the barrel for anything. I, I was not otherwise engaged and we talked a couple of days later and apparently he hit that pater. And, uh, and the next week I was in this very room and that very chair interviewing fourteen people around the table to, to, to be the, the principal. What I've come to learn in a very short time is a really remarkable and warm educational community. And when I say community, I, I mean that with a capital C. You know, we, we, I did, this is my twenty-third year being either a principal or a superintendent of Berkshire's. And, uh, I have to say, I've been around a lot of schools and seen a lot of things and worked with some wonderful people, Betsy included. I did not read that P V, by the way. I, we hosted that P V. A woman named Kiyati Joshi led it and I was a student alongside Betsy, so I credit where credits do. DuBois is a special place. I, I hope the people that live here and that support that school and who write their, their tax bills to make everything at that school possible, understand that, that that is an extraordinary community comprised of extraordinary people who are really dedicated to the well-being of young people that are, uh, in two thousand and twenty-four facing just some massive challenges from, from right in their own homes, some of them to, to larger society things, things that society is throwing at them. And what, what a warm and welcoming group of folks. And I, I would, by way of introduction, um, I would like to thank Peter and all of you for this opportunity and the administrative team here in this building, including Sharon's team and Steve. The interview team that, that represented the school in this room a few weeks ago was really remarkable. A difficult, challenging group of, um, questions, several of which stumped the kind of dinosaur in the room who thought that this would be a breeze to sit here. The Julie and Deborah, the, the guidance secretary and the, and the main administrative assistant down at DuBois, uh, just remarkable. I, I have been in education long enough to know who actually makes buildings work. And principals come and go and superintendents come and go. Folks like, uh, like Julie Duff and, uh, and, uh, Deborah Spencer are the ones that, that really serves the bedrock. Ellie, who's sitting behind me, Ellie Rizzo, I'm so excited to, to, to have a, a partner in crime like, like Ellie. Just the work ethic and the welcome and the expertise. J P back there and his team, the Clio team have been wonderful and welcoming. The custodial and the food service team, I've tried to lead as many of them as possible. Teachers and paraprofessionals have been doing teacher meetings and paraprofessional meetings daily when we're not doing interviews for the couple of slots we have open. Everybody's been so gracious and supportive and has let me know how much they truly love and value that school in this district, in these towns and these towns' children. And I, I do thank all of you for, for, for giving me the opportunity to serve in a place where kids and their well-being, their education, their academics, as well as their growth as decent, ethical, thoughtful human beings clearly comes first. So very excited to be here and very honored to be here. But thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So let me bring up now Ian Brown as our new assistant principal for career vocational and technical education.
Hey, everybody. Do you want?
Hello.
My name is Ian Brown. I'm a Western Mass guy. I was born and raised in Williamsburg, just north of Northampton. And then to Westfield, where my mom was teaching Westfield schools. We were down there, uh, seeing you in high school. Uh, after high school, I went to college for a little bit, uh, about two weeks. And was not, that's two weeks in role. I don't want, I don't want to claim that I actually attended two weeks. But at the time, I, I learned that I didn't like college. So I bunked around a little bit and my, uh, my, my stepdad, who went up to my adopted dad, Ron, he was a vet and kind of convinced me that I should go into the service. So I ended up taking his advice and not going into Marines like he did, but sending me to the Air Force. I spent ten years in the Air Force, stationed primarily in Washington, D.C. With some, um, some very cool opportunities as a young man to go around, uh, temporary duty station and see a little bit of the world. Unfortunately, at such a young age, we're more interested in what inside of N C O clubs look like. Seeing what, you know, so it's like, oh, I, I went to Japan. I was like, I don't know. So I do regret that, but I've been able to travel a little more in my former careers. While I was finishing up my service, my active time, uh, I was also knocking off a college degree at Jordan Mason University. And met my future bride, my wife, Ashley. We've been together twenty years, ten years of marriage. After we graduated college and I got off the back to Philly, we moved back up to Western Mass. She's a Virginia girl, but she wanted seasons. And after what, she was like, I don't want any seasons. So we settled in Westfield for a little bit and plugged away at, uh, at Master's Greaves and finding out what I want to do post military, like a lot of vets, I kind of bunked around for a little bit. The family business of education, uh, grandmother, grandfather, mother, uh, my wife. So they said, I should check it out. And I did, I became a social studies teacher at Gateway Regional High School in Hudson, Mass. Very similar school to mine with less engaged community and, and less support. And it's kind of served as a, almost a harbinger of what can happen where people don't care. But the kid community were wonderful. And in those four years, I, I really found out that I loved working at school. I loved working with families. I loved working with stakeholders. Really enjoyed working with young people, but that I wasn't a great teacher. And like I can tell you that deals are awesome and I can tell you why, but I can't play any of the songs. And teaching is one of those things, my, my uncle built his own elevator company. And he was always in the hard time of a teacher. You know, when you're putting in that piece of wood, you don't have somebody in the back of the elevator telling you to pull your jokes to two other people while you're trying to do your job. And it is just an incredibly challenging job, but I still wanted to work in schools. So I decided administration would be where I, where my skill set and have taken to it. Spent ten years as a middle school vice principal. Betsy, I, I like middle schoolers to appoint. Ten years. No, they're great. They're, uh, they're acquired taste. No, it's where I have, I have two young boys, I have twin boys, twelve years old, who in, in our town, you go to the big house after clubs, they go up to the high school, seven to twelve. So it was very cool going to middle school, going to middle school. It's my boys go to middle school. But a really cool adventure for, for me to now to, to, to be experienced and seeing a high school while they're experiencing that same thing. Yeah, and fellowies, it's for that a long time. It's been my goal to work in, in, in folk ed. That has been my goal. I think if my life played out differently, I instead of being sixty-eight out of sixty-nine kids graduating class, I probably would have went to a folk school and been a lot more successful. And I, 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 I see, I have a kind of season and I see opportunities that I don't like kids want to follow. And I think it's a great opportunity to, to really help the school and to build up something that is, that is the courage role and there's such potential for really great things. And, and I think that one of the things that I know is what I've been telling people in, in the education thing, oh, where, where are you going? Where are you ending up? I say, oh, my, my. There is, there is still a favorable factor out there where people are like, and that's really cool. It's cool to be part of that. It might try, I just want something to try from, from Randville up fifty-seventh here. Just posted down fifty-seventh to West Springfield. It's all my life. I didn't really go past, I told Mr. Lurgia that I didn't really go past the bummer's lane. Hey, I got, I got, I got a case. So I'm very excited to be here. The kids I've met so far have been absolutely outstanding. I'm really looking forward to work with people. I'm really looking forward to become part of the team. Really working, looking forward to working with some great teachers. And the new team with Christopher, Peter, myself, I'm really excited. I think that both Mr. Lurgia and I have been around long enough. It's all kind of new change in, hey, this, this is, you know, the Western Springfield, this is something different. This seems pretty cool. And to be working with Gavin, this is, uh, yeah, thanks.
Awesome.
Awesome. Yeah.
Great to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have an experience, the winter drive, though.
That's another thing about education. My, my wife, I remember when I went into it, you get so soft and there's snow days.
You get, get in line with the. Yeah, brutal. So last but certainly not least, Christopher Barnes, our, our new vice principal.
I don't know how I'm going to follow you.
To the big crunch, is that the superintendent?
Yeah, we'll talk about that. Hi, everybody. I'm Christopher Barnes. Obviously, I'm the principal at that William Ramon Regional High School. Incredibly excited to be here. I thought, uh, that, what I knew was to start looking in, beginning in the winter. Like, you know, if there's one school, honestly, this is a thought of mine, if there's one school I'd love to work at, it's mine. And I didn't dream that there was a video opening, but ultimately it was and here I am. So, uh, you know, it's a dream for me to be here. I'm really excited. Everybody's been incredibly welcome. I get to start on July first. People I spend the most time with are Pete, Ian, Doreen, and Chalita at the high school. And they've been fantastic. They sent out a, uh, communication to teachers a couple of weeks ago and said, you know, please come on in, make an appointment, make sure I'm around. A bunch of teachers have come in, met a lot of people who have graduated from William Ramon and taught there for decades. So it's really a testament to the love for the school. I want to share a little anecdote around what I am doing right now. I wrote this book, you all probably know about it, a bunch of years ago. It's called Just Mercy, Mercy by Brian Stevenson. And then I would listen to different talks. In this one talk, he's, he mentioned how he was going to Rosa Parks and some other civil rights luminaries. And he got there and, and, you know, Rosa Parks said, okay, so Ryan, I can sit down and we're going to do some talking here, Ryan. He knows what you're going to do. He says, go there. And she said, we don't listen. That's true. She says, so Ryan, what are you going to do? He said, I'm going to miss it. So that's what I've been doing. I've been listening a lot. I know there's a lot going on in high school. There's a lot of initiatives that are happening. People have thoughts and feelings about it. What I want to do is really work with them and do the best for the school. I want to, um, access their expertise. I want to rely on that. There's a lot of wealth and knowledge at the school and that's, that's, uh, that's what I do. I work with folks around me who are incredibly bright, uh, support teachers as strongly as I can because they're a mistake period of things. And, uh, so that's what I believe in. I want to sort of try to coalesce some of the things that are going on to, um, I don't know, to make it feel easier, to give teachers time to learn about these things so that they can become stronger in their craft. And incredibly excited to be here. Thank you all, by the way. Everybody's been incredibly welcome and warm. So I appreciate your, um, I appreciate being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not giving you as many jokes as we have.
Somebody has to be the straight guy. So, so I, I think we largely covered roses and thorns. Is anybody else? All right. So, so I'd like to move on to, to one grant approval. And I'll share a little context for that and then, and then just to inform you of another one we're working on. So we're very appreciative that the Berkshire United Way has renewed a grant for us for forty-five thousand dollars for general operating support. I shared that, the packet, some of the goals and outcomes. They're a great community partner and we're trying to do a much better job of complying with, uh, mass general law around this. So if somebody would like to make a motion to, uh, accept this award that we.
Can I ask a question, Peter?
Yeah.
We're held under this contract to certain, um, partners, like, uh, gaining soft skills development. How do we measure whether we've done that?
They, they have a couple of different ways that they measure. Do you want to talk to it, J P, a little?
Sure. So. So by and large, um, this, uh, the Berkshire United Way budget comes to the after-school, um, and summer programs. And we utilize the C E O survey. Stands for Student Academic Youth Outcomes. But it has, it's a list of descriptors of, of, uh, teachers observe, how often do I see my student through this? How often do I see my student through this? And we sample students at the beginning of our program and at the end of our program. And currently, that's what we're using as a mechanism for attracting that. Um, we are going to be exploring actually some other, um, some other ways of attracting that in the future, but at the moment, that's what we are.
Has that's acceptable, obviously, to the Berkshire United Way?
Yes.
That approach?
Yeah, that was part of, that was part of the, the grant, I would say.
Thanks. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the Berkshire United Way grant, accept fourth through July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Go on to second. Second. Ode by Rich, second by Bill. Any discussion? Anne's online, so it's. So it's. Let's go around. Well, let's start with her. Anne, just, you're on mute.
Oh. Unmute. I think I'm on. Can you hear me? Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
And Diane. It is unanimous.
The, the second one's not a vote, but I just want to give you a heads up on it. And ideally, I'll be coming back to you with a vote. For several years, the Bar Foundation has supported, uh, three chunks of our work at the high school. In this transition year, they invited us to, uh, apply for an extension of that grant for an additional year and then potentially even more after that. So, um, we, we submitted a, a, a grant application, got some feedback. We'll submit a formal application in the next couple of weeks. And it's up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So no action to take. I just want to keep you in the loop on that. Which is good. And I really appreciate their support. I'm now going to hand the metaphorical microphone over to, to Rob. He's been working on some stuff when, when the time that I was away. Uh, and here's more context on, on that.
So what this is, is the request to approve a memorandum of understanding with the D H E Unit C in terms of the remuneration of licensed practical nurse position. This is a bit of background for everybody in the listening audience. Section five oh four regulation requires school districts to provide free and appropriate public education to each qualified person with a disability. There are several students currently involved in William Ramon High School who require the services of a licensed practical nurse to ensure that they can access their curriculum that's been designed for. The district, this past year, used contracted services to provide the L P Ns. The high school students will likely be requiring L P Ns over the next few years. And there are some students in lower grades who may very well also need them. So the decision was made to create a position of L P N power profession. Uh, and I understand that that was already approved by the school committee last year. Now, uh, basically, the school committee also negotiated with the, uh, Unit C over a contract and actually put in, in Article six point one three, uh, a way of remunerating that position. Unfortunately, the remuneration written in the contract did, does not provide an hourly wage that would be competitive with L P N positions in other institutions, such as essentially retirement communities and that sort. And, uh, uh, basically, it would have required some sort of interpretation of the language. So Teresa Jerome, the U C president, worked with me to develop and I know you, that solved the issue of competitive remuneration in a way that did not require interpretation of different, uh, parts of the contract and essentially created a nice new figure. So if you want to take a look at it, uh, the concept is to strike six point one, Article six point one three, replace it with the following language. Essentially, it sets the, uh, the hourly, I won't be disallowed, but basically the idea is it, it sets the number of days that will be worked. Hours of the day, uh, covered by the contract, uh, of the U C contract. But it starts the rate at thirty-one dollars per hour. And, uh, we, uh, both Rich and I reviewed all job postings in, in local institutions that would also be hiring. They ran between thirty and thirty-six dollars. So we figured that thirty-one was, was helpful. Another important part of this is we wanted to give the superintendent the opportunity to negotiate if the person had experience as an L P N in another field. The current contract only has a way of, of allowing the superintendent to negotiate if the person has power profession experience. And that was just not germane to this position. So superintendent has the opportunity to, uh, essentially negotiate if someone is coming to, uh, up from thirty-one up to thirty-three, fifty an hour. Are there any questions?
Saying no questions, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Unit C regarding the licensed practical nurse.
Second it. Good. I got a, Rich, with a motion, you'll field with a second. Any other discussion? Hearing not Anne.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
And I, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
How do you guys know what Philly's talking about?
I just answered.
You're wrong.
Let's see, Bill, in one person. I al, I also, the next item, which the Chromebook user agrees. So during the COVID epidemic, the D H R S D ensured that all students had access to Chromebooks for use in school and at home. The program has never been codified in my office. I could find no school policy and I could find anything written about this. So the document that you have before you was written by Jennifer Ware, the W E D DuBois librarian. And it clarifies expectations for students in grades seven to twelve in regards to the district issuance at home. And this is always helpful, just to be very clear, so that both the students and the parents are aware of the expectations that the school has for this. It also clarified responsibility on the second page that families have in regard to district-owned property. So essentially, that, uh, I don't know whether this is before, but if, if you, uh, basically, based on the, the coverage, basically, if you lose the computer or it's destroyed, uh, the parents are responsible for seventy-five. and seventy-five dollars. So what happened was Jennifer found a, an insurance policy for twenty-five dollars a year that would cover accidents, fire, flood, natural disasters, theft and vandalism by other parties. So if there were something to happen to the computer, that they would not be responsible for the two hundred and seventy-five dollars, otherwise they would be. Gives them the opportunity to participate in this. And most importantly, there's, as you can see written in my note, that's families who would like to purchase a protection plan, but for whom the fee would create a financial hardship, should contact the school principal. So the idea to try and make sure this is available to all people because of the central importance of computers in education. So this is, that's the concept is to request the truth, the Chromebook user agreement for a question.
And then, would you promote on that?
Yes. Motion to approve the Chromebook user agreement and protection plan.
Second. Discussion, questions?
We just added a number of such computers to our supply. Are we increasing the number of the little computers because?
We are. It's also tied to our, um, things that, part of our thinking was if students have access to devices, whether it's their own laptop or a Chromebook, they'll be able to, to use it to do work.
So does this mean every student in grade seven to twelve will have a Chromebook? Basically, as I said, real issue of Chromebook, they said, does not have a personal one. And if you call me, I've been discussing at the last meeting, personally owned devices, right, the difference. So what would happen in this case, if someone had a preferred computer device, they could certainly bring it in and use it. They prefer the Apple iOS ten PCs or Chromebook, they have that, they have that option. But if they request one, yes. And from what I understand, there were at least two hundred purchased.
Yeah, maybe more.
Maybe more.
And some of the lifecycle of it was about three years. And then the hardware doesn't meet the needs of the expanding software.
And as, as Steve Soul was telling me, that we have sort of like, as he described as piles, I believe, the quantitative description, there are piles of non-working Chromebooks. And I think that this is, I personally think that the clarification of expectations and the clarification of the responsibility of families in regard to district-owned items will perhaps help engender greater sense of responsibility.
Anyone else?
Pittsfield had a problem with lots of Chromebooks. The Pittsfield High, I remember reading the article in Eagle about how many were damaged and things like that. I like the fact that you have an insurance policy. Is there going to be, oh, in regards to repair, is that going to add more to the budget of the tech department? I mean, when we've met as a finance committee in the fall, there's no.
All right.
Do you play it every time you speak?
I know it came up at the, the finance committee meeting in the fall when we have our review. Is there going to be a budgetary impact on this, do you think?
It's sort of built into the, their budget anyway.
Yeah, I saw that.
I, I, I think this will actually lessen the budgetary impact because there are two things. One, signing a piece of paper and paying twenty-five dollars raises the expectation. And then two, the, the insurance would, would cover really significant damage, right? We still, for whatever reason, people like to pull off the keys.
Switch.
Right, switch them around, whatever. So there's, there's still some costs associated. Anyone else? Oh, 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 yeah. You're muted there. Diane.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes, Bill.
Yes, Rich.
Yes.
And.
Hi. Yes.
It's unanimous.
It's wild up here.
So what I'd like to do now is move to the next topic, and then we'll come back to Rob for some of the policies. We're all standing here from JP and Colin. So we don't need to end the review leveling up work and shifts in approach for teaching this year. This is something we've been talking about a lot. Ideally, we would have done a meeting for earlier, and part of that got delayed simply because, because I was at. As I've started talking with both Christopher and Colin, we need to continue to do things to support teachers as we head into the new year. And there are a number of pieces there, support around curriculum, support around supervision, how we allocate resources, both staff, class sizes and time, and then professional development. We're, we're looking forward to address the concerns that some folks have raised. And, and we plan on coming back as early as October with an update on our, on our shifts and implementation. All right. So, and, and I would go into more detail, but we also have a few committee members who are, who are absent, and I want to be respectful of talking about it when they're here. A couple of quick updates on our acquisitions. We'll look at the personnel report on the other end. We moved one teacher from a specialty position to a third grade position, Stephanie Cluco. We're excited about that. They finished some interviews at the elementary school. It's not public yet, but it looks like we're in the process of filling a librarian position. So we'll share that at the, at the next meeting. It's an interview for a French physician at the high school today. We'll know some more about that. So did yours, oh, they interviewed for a guidance counselor at the middle school. I had a meeting with that person on Monday, so that's really good news. We have a few parent vacancies, a nurse vacancy at the middle school, and an English position at the, at the middle school, as well as one math position at the high school. Am I missing anything, anybody?
We interviewed a teenager.
Oh, great. Yeah. So then the only one, and I might have mentioned it, is that we need to fill the position of the specialty teacher who transferred to the third grade position. But, but we're in really pretty good shape.
What is this, the library, you mentioned the librarian at elementary school?
Yes. So we've offered a person that.
Okay.
And what happens is those interviews happen at the building level. And then after that happens, they refer the person to me, and I meet with them about salary and put them on the salary schedule.
As long as it's a process.
Nine out of ten times, they say yes.
Yeah. No, 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 I'm all right. I want to make sure.
Yeah.
We have a school nurse as well.
Oh, yeah, no, I mentioned that.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sorry. So, and, and those are all posted, and we're reaching out to the broader community. The nurse one is a particularly hard position to fill because nurses in hospital settings are now quite well compensated. So it's hard for, except for unique circumstances, for somebody to step away from, from that. But really great colleagues, nice kids, really hired. Sometimes people like to work in a school setting, then actually on a setting. So it's a wonderful.
I was going to ask you, Peter, seems to be we're getting par professionals more. And is this a result of the contract changes that we did and that made it more attractive for par professionals to apply here in this district?
I hope so. I mean, it's sort of parallel to what Rob was talking about. One of the things we did in the latest iteration of the contract is everybody's not necessarily starting on the same step. And I can count people's previous experience from up to five years, which, which helps a little bit. It continues to be a hard position to fill. We did a lot to raise the rate. It's, it's, it's hard. It's some of the most complicated work. And, and we may revisit that. And they're almost certain. The other thing I'm excited about is a little bit of success with having previous par professionals step into teaching roles. So two years ago, Beth Lepp stepped into the early childhood role at the high school. And Audrey Consol was in a position at the middle school. This year, we're moving her to a Spanish position at the high school. She now actually has three licenses, Spanish, special education in itself. So that's remarkable. Great. So that's where we are on hire. And then, and then I should mention this, like, and you heard from all the people, the new administrators we hired, right? That could not have gone better. And, and I was actually a little nervous going into the beginning of June. And I clearly be happier with the group. So what I'd like to do now is have JP come back up to, to talk about the summer program a little bit, because we're in the middle of it. We don't have data, but he can share stuff. I have your slides. Okay, so I can, I can present that.
Okay. Right. Somebody's there. Okay. So Peter asked me to just put together a very brief summary of what we're doing this summer in Cleo, and just a little bit of information about the end of year data. So, so summer twenty-four, I'm going to talk about our enrollment, what programs we're offering, the demographics of the students who are enrolled, as well as talk about some highlights of the program as well. So our summer enrollment is forty-six at the elementary school, thirty-seven at the middle school, thirteen at the high school. You can see the distribution there, where we have our largest bumps is definitely right there in the middle. We have thirty-seven at the middle school is actually very robust compared to previous years. So those are the numbers. The programs we're offering at the elementary school, students rotate through four different activity blocks. And those are determined by what group they're in. We have, we have a rising first grade group. We have two groups of rising second and third mixed together. And we have a group of rising fourth graders. So in those four groups, they will rotate through four different activity blocks. We do daily activities in mindfulness and reflection to support our, our sort of whole student wellness activities. We have courses in movement. The Berkshire Botanical Park is a perennial favorite, no pun intended, sorry, for, for all four grades. The, we're running a soccer program at the middle school, and Brendan Heck is actually doing a soccer course with our third and fourth graders as well, bringing down some of his middle schoolers as mentors into that group. Flying Cloud is again a perennial partner with us. They are doing a STEAM program at all four levels. Mighty Adventures is kind of an exciting thing. This is our third and fourth graders, being taught a course that was developed by and is being taught by one of our interns. So this is a high school student who has been an intern for a number of years and is actually, has developed a fairly robust and has been a very successful course. Fantastic Fibers is being taught by Maddie Albano. And Bilingual Art, which is also a program that was developed and is being taught by one of our high school interns. This is actually being taught by an extraordinary sophomore, who in addition to being bilingual is bicultural. She was born in the U.S., spent a significant part of her childhood in Mexico, and moved back to the U.S. She's been an outstanding liaison for many of our student sorority arrivals. She's able to, in addition to obviously translate, she's able to help us to understand what they are going through and what their experiences may have been. So that has really been an outstanding program. To be clear, the bilingual art course is not, the goal of the bilingual art course is that students who are native English speakers learn some Spanish, and students who are native Spanish speakers learn some English. And so they really work together to help each other. One of the side effects of this that was a wonderful unintended consequence is that we're finding that it's building a really strong community within, within that cohort of students. Very often we see our English language learners tend to sort of self-segregate and sequester themselves. And we're finding because they're working with each other and appreciating that they both have knowledge that's worthwhile, is that it's really sort of breaking out of that barrier. So that has really been a highlight of our program this summer. Programs at the middle school, we changed our structure of the middle school this summer to create theme-based camps rather than doing the traditional rotation. Well, the feedback we got from middle schoolers in the past is that they were, it felt too much like school to do the, the rotation through. Many of them signed up because they were interested in one thing and hated the other three classes. And so our attendance really was, was a dismal in the previous years. So we did two theme-based camps this year. We did soccer and green natures. Green natures is a community partner who does work with students now in primarily nature. We do lots of hiking and construction and things like that. And that has, those have both been very successful this year. Brendan Heck, our seventh grade BLA teacher, is running the summer camp. Mercedes Girona, our middle school Spanish teacher, is also working with him to make this a bilingual course similar to what I described with the bilingual art. So really, this has been a really fun experiment for us to, to approach English language learners in a different way, and also foster appreciation in our native English speakers, that they, they have a, of these students as well. And that has been going really well. I have to mention, I want to shout out Brendan. One of the things that Brendan acknowledges with the kids is, although his wife is fluent in Spanish, he is not. And he is willing to stand up in front of the students and say, am I pronouncing this right? Am I saying this right? And it's been so, I mean, it's a really hard thing for a teacher to do. And, but it's such a wonderful model of being open to learning things. And that has really been a highlight of the, the summer as well. The high school, we are running two programs at the high school. One is the traditional transitions program, which is designed to help rising ninth graders transition into the high school. We also, we open that up to all high schoolers, but it is, it's a very small group of students. So we have some rising dines, and I believe a tenth grader and an eleventh grader. The theme that they're doing this year is nature and composting. And they're developing not just compost bins, but a compost system that can be implemented at the school. We've had some discussions with Steve Soul about why these, these initiatives have failed in the past. And he said, everybody always starts with a pen and doesn't bother thinking about how the. And doesn't bother thinking about how the system is going to work. And so the kids are developing actually a system that you know, that they will propose um, to the schools. Um, we also, of course, have our internships that I that I mentioned before. Those are uh, uh, high school services as well. Our targeted outcomes for the summer at this, this year, the Twenty First Century Program predetermined what our outcomes needed to be. This um, references back to that S A O survey that I mentioned. Historically, schools had to include engagement and were allowed to choose their other outcomes. This year, Twenty First Century said, these are the outcomes you are doing. Um, so we're doing the engagement, critical thinking, communication and self-regulation. Yeah, I mentioned the um, the work we're doing with the kids with mindfulness and self-regulation has really been a highlight. Um, it's really, um, uh, there's a, there's a technique called mountain breathing that involves breathing in and out as you run your hand up and down like this. And it's it's a wonderful technique because uh, the kids have to they they breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. It's a really cool day when I see a kid in a classroom going like this. And that feels stressful to me. Um, you know, that's very exciting. Like you see a kid who's getting himself worked up and then how they give something back. And I'm talking about like first and second grader are capable to do that. So that's, that was, that's been very exciting. Our demographics for this year, um, I should mention that the Twenty First Century uh, grant requires the following. Uh, forty percent of our uh, participants must be economically disadvantaged, forty percent of our enrollment must be uh, economically disadvantaged students. And our enrollment must meet or exceed the school proportions of um, students who that plans and English language learners. Um, our demographics for the summer, um, right now are, uh, as you can see, for the most part, we are hitting our targets. Um, I tried to put this as clearly as possible. Um, the first number is is the raw number of students. Um, the second number is the percentage in program. Um, in the sec- in the sped and the L columns, the third number is the percentage to happen school. So um, in the elementary school, we're meeting, we're certainly in the number of sped and the L students. We're not quite hitting our sped goal in the middle school, um, but we are definitely hitting our D L L goal. Um, we are not hitting our goal in the high school. Um, I put an asterisk there because the measure, um, this is something that that is going to come up in not just our program. The way that the state measures economically disadvantaged is whether or not you have applied for some sort of state aid program. If a family is economically disadvantaged and does not apply for state aid, they do not count towards our numbers. So I, for example, know for a fact about those twelve high school students. There are several who are coming from very difficult circumstances, but are not considered economically disadvantaged by the state because they have not applied for any state aid, uh, food stamps and so forth. Um, so I I mentioned that just because obviously our number is not hitting the number there, but it's an important um, it's an important issue that has come to my attention that we need to consider. We're not even close to hitting our sped target in the high school. Um, and we did hit our D L L target in the high school. Um, looking out to the end of year demographics, which have just submitted to um, the Twenty First Century State Office. We uh, we hit all of our goals at the elementary school. We just almost hit all of our goals at the middle school. Um, I will say that uh, in the middle of the school year, we changed all these numbers and we recognized that sped was underrepresented and we did a targeted program to to recruit students. Um, and and that did, it it, that did improve, but it's it's still just shy of representative of the school. Um, the high school um, hit our economics numbers, hit our real numbers, didn't didn't hit our sped numbers. Um, the dosage hours is a term Twenty First Century uses. It basically says, you have to run, you have to run four hundred hours of program each year. Um, and students have to have an average dosage hours of a hundred. That means if we take the attendance of all of the students in the program, add them up at average, then we'll. Um, we hit our goals for our elementary middle school. We did not even close for high school. Basically, what this is showing is the high school students either aren't signing up for programming or are signing up for programming and that not coming.
Definitely don't find people who would benefit.
Yes.
Not just sort of announcing that it's available.
That's correct. That's correct. A high school context is harder too for a number of reasons. So it's sort of all of the other things that are going on has the possibility of cannibalizing our our targeted population. So if people are involved in amateur school athletics, then they may not have the time to do this. If people are involved in internships, then they may not have the time to do this. If they're involved in uh, work, right, and they're they're a little older and they're working at a restaurant, then they may not have the time to do this.
But what about summer? I mean, summer program is much smaller.
Yes.
Isn't it, or shouldn't be, all those programs that are targeted at identified students?
Yes. Um, I mean, and we we did, we did do outreach. I I met with the um, I met with the the uh, counseling department at the high school. They did, um, at a couple of points through the year, identify the six students for various programs. We sent out direct invitations to those students. We sent out direct invitations to their parents. Um, again, our biggest issue is attendance. Um, students sign up for things and then when the end of the school day rolls around, they just, they choose to go home instead.
And do we then follow up with their parents?
Uh, for the attendance issue? Um, we do have historically have that. Uh, it's it's been
It's a very sort of lax, yes.
Um, it's, it's, yes, it's
I mean, this summer, I I understand people that
Well, that's, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm talking about
Regular.
This is, this is the school.
I know, that's the whole school.
Um, attendance for the summer has gotten stagnant. We've been excellent. But uh, during the school year, it's it's been a very challenging, I think it's interested and engaged in something after school other than, you know, what might already be happening.
The other direction we're going with this, discuss this a little bit. The the requirements of the Twenty First Century uh, grant at the high school level make it very hard for us to meet it. So we'll likely end up with more of a homegrown program where kids can get a range of supports. It's already built into the contract that that uh, teachers provide a chunk of tutoring e- every week, whether it's before school, during school or or after school. And and then we might have some shorter term ad hoc program. Like it's not funded by Twenty First Century. It's funded by by the district to to be gaps. Um, and and that will give us a little more flexibility around the the tension with athletics, internships, jobs, uh, and and other things.
Yeah, just I mean, just to be clear, um, the requirements for Twenty First Century are currently derived for uh, ten weeks, two days a week minimum, two hours each of those days. Um, and that's a lot. I mean, that's just a lot to ask a kid to implement. Um, we actually ran a couple of programs sort of off book this year that met once a week instead of twice a week and and they were, you know, reasonably well attended. Um, so we're trying to figure out the best way to to change that that number up there. Um, and figure out more importantly, what our students need, that are that and how to reach that.
What's the last line?
That's the last line. Um, so um, that's what's going on right now. Feel free to drop by. I mean, any day in the next three weeks, the um, uh, high school program runs until August first, middle school until August eighth and um, elementary school until August fifteenth. Um, and that's because of that four hundred hour requirement, um, and the different school day. So the the high school program, for example, was running for uh, two hours and fifteen minutes every day. Whereas the elementary school program was just running for two hours. So at the end of the school year, when it's calculated for the summer, I was like, okay, elementary needs to run this the way. Um, but uh, we're at the middle school, um, Monday through Thursday, um, eight to three thirty. Stop by if you want to see some cool stuff.
Excellent. Thank you. Perfect. Uh, so we're going to transition to uh, Colin, just a quick update on some uh, summer professional development stuff. People think uh, teachers are off for the summer, our our teachers and staff are working really hard this summer.
Yeah, we've had some really great opportunities going on for staff all summer, connected to a lot of the work that we are are doing and just kind of helping staff and educators push their, you know, capacity in these different areas. Um, so our summer PD kicked off with a last week of June with a proficiency based learning institute. Um, and a little bit, I'm going to mention something else, but I'm going to have to get the habit of not saying P D L anymore because we're doubling up on acronyms as a district now. So if you were confused before, just wait, we're going to keep it all in. Um, but our proficiency institute covered everything from a review of the basics of what proficiency based learning is, what that system looks like, uh, all the way to assessment alignment and tuning protocols. Uh, so one thing we've heard from our educators before is we can make sure our P D opportunities meet them where they are and are differentiated for skill levels. Uh, so this was a week long series where each day got a bit deeper into kind of the concept and the work. So educators were able to sign up for the entire week if they wanted to review things they knew or needed to kind of get introduced to some of these or just come to targeted days that were covering the material and information that they really needed to work on and focus on. Um, and we had a big vote. We have some people who attended the entire week and some who came in for those dates for that targeted work. Um, as long as we're talking about this, I just really want to throw a special thanks to Dan Lieber from Great Schools Partnership. Uh, he's been a consultant with the district, working on this proficiency based learning for a number of years. And actually, the last day that it was with us is his last day of working as a consultant. He retired. Uh, so he went out on a high note right here on Berkshire Hills and and we're really just, we're really appreciative for all the support and work he's put into the district over the years. And we're going to make some a lot. Um, from there, once we got into July, we had a series of workshops at the elementary school run by the reading league and a series of workshops at the high school run by uh, the Marzano. Uh, the reading league was a series of five workshops covering strategies related to literacy work that my work had already been working on through the year and previous years. Uh, just kind of building upon that. Each day was a different topic. Once again, to allow educators to, they could choose what they thought they needed the most supported where they wanted to push their own type of abilities. It was really a nice mix of time to learn new things and also talk with their colleagues about how to implement the things they were learning in these workshops. Uh, the Marzano workshops were also based in the proficiency based learning uh, model, but with a different lens than that G S P time. Uh, this was really focused around things like planning instruction, how to pre-assess students and determine pathways forward based on that pre-assessment. Uh, and also strategies for introducing proficiency based learning to students who might be new to the system and to communities who are trying to understand it. So some really important topics that we we know as a district, we want to engage in.
With this pre-assessment student.
So proficiency based learning is is a skills focused way of approaching education. And basically at the start of each year, at the start of new units of study, the idea is we need to get a measure of where students are, of the different skills that are going to be assessed. Um, so this is looking at different formative and summative assessment strategies to determine the skill level students have as they begin either a new school year or a new unit of study. So that we can then, when we do have summative assessment at the end of the year or at the end of the unit, kind of chart that growth path that the students have.
So it's a, it's an effort to figure out how how vulnerable that student is.
Yeah, basically.
At the at the outset and then?
Correct. Um, and then use that knowledge to kind of chart that scenario individualized differentiated pathway for students through that unit of study or through the year to make sure that we're supporting all students where they are. The same way this P E was designed, that, you know, we teach where they are, we want to modeling that with our students and supporting them as well. And and not just kind of giving them one pathway for all students. Uh, as we move forward in the summer, uh, we we've got some work still to come in interdisciplinary units and projects at D B M. Uh, really looking to create collaborative and authentic learning experience for students. Um, and this is where that that kind of connects to that other P D L I was talking about, which is project based learning. Um, both the work we're going to do at D B M uh, in August and some work that some of our high school teachers are already engaged in is focused around project based learning, which is really a more self-directed kind of strategy for students to engage with material, like said, in an authentic way. That was the illness of learning and demonstrating understanding on them with just educators being more supportive than guides in the process. Uh, so really excited for that work to develop. Um, and then lastly, of course, especially with all the members of our admin team, we're going to spend some time as a group doing some professional development as well. Um, we're looking at a three day series as an admin retreat right now that's going to allow us to work on communication and problem solving practices as a group. It's going to help us cover some district business and get on the same page regarding our approach to our workflows. Uh, and then also some opportunities to engage as professionals learning together to really push our own capacities as a team. That's going to set us up hopefully for a successful year and beyond.
Great, thanks.
Any questions? I have a question. Um, for the giving education, do you uh, have a percentage of how many teachers attend that for the whole week?
I don't have the percentage. On on any given date, we have about ten teachers in the room. And like I said, that group shifted a little bit. Uh, kind of having a flow depending on what the topic was. Uh, so I think in total, we ended up with twenty two teachers attending. I I don't I wasn't, I can't tell you the percentage of our staff that represents.
And also, um, with the influx of um, uh, D L L's uh, non-international students last year, do we do we give any um, off-season thoughts on how we're going to address that? If we get an influx of people did last year, is that, has there been any planning or any thought um, from your, you know, area, how that's been moved up?
Yeah, so some some really targeted D S L T V has been worked into the year of all P D calendar. And we're looking at everything from running workshops that's going to actually enhance the strategies educators are using in their classrooms, while also looking into opportunities for things like group studies that are going to allow them to build that empathy for this experience that the students are having. So we can kind of make sure that we're welcoming these students into our community and into our culture, but also have educational strategies designed to help them get on task, get on track with their peers and support their learning forward. So all of that's being worked in our year.
The other thing that's connected to this, and maybe nobody else is aware of this, is uh, from a structural level, some number of the students that joined this last year, year of the year, that they relocated so, um, you never know whether the numbers are going to go up and up or down, but it looks like in the short term, the numbers can actually uh, go down a little as we as we start.
Until the state finds out that our numbers are down. Because I just feel something.
Yeah, it's 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 hard to follow. Like, and I talk to the state all the time about it. It's hard for me to follow, but but a a number of the families were relocated to other communities and 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 many of them are happy with the preparation. So we'll we'll see what that means for us. Great, thank you very much, Colin. I don't often ask Steve Soul to speak, but but when I do, he has the eternal wisdom to share. Uh, to to give a little context, uh, somebody wrote an article in the, or a letter to the editor or something in the Edge about uh, the use of pesticides on school grounds. And and I just wanted him to the shares and context and clear the air and and put it in the context of what happens, you know, their schools.
Thanks. Um, so what prompted this was many years ago, I had my maintenance staff all fall, bringing in top soil and seeding and paying as seasons were unfolding and games were being played on the actual fields that games were being played on. And we were pretty close to having to move some of the home games to an alternate site. And that was because that we have an infestation of crops that eat the roots of the grass. And then, as you all probably know, it happens in people's yards as well. When the crows and the skunks see the dead grass, they know that there's crows there. They go start digging, and now all of a sudden, you've got little holes in your playing field. So in an effort to kind of maintain the fields better, we enlisted the help of TrueGreen. Just a few things that I'd like to read from TrueGreen. The TrueGreen objective is to protect the health and safety of all student athletes as well as community members that use the fields while minimizing the liability that damaged fields present to school districts and the members of that member town. And to present the best playing surfaces we can for our students, the MIAA standards are an acceptable level of safety, which is determined by the referees or whatever, depending on what sport we're talking about. Their commitments to the health and safety of their customers, the environment, and the full-time employees, materials TrueGreen applies are approved by the Environmental Protection Agency, the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, as well as independent laboratories. They treat hundreds of high schools throughout the state, including most of the high schools in Berkshire County. Their approach to field name and fact, the best results they can using the least active ingredients. They spot treat areas when possible. And the quantities are obviously determined after an analysis of the soil and the amount of bugs we actually have down there. And the applications follow the EPA mandated Integrated Cost Management Plan Development specifically for mine and mine regional high school. So that's kind of all their PR stuff, but this is the, I think, the most interesting stuff. The all the materials applied at the high school have been approved by the EPA, the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, independent laboratories, with the specific knowledge that these substances are going to be used on public school grounds where student athletes are playing, the public is there, there's wildlife there, there's pests there. So they're not sending these chemicals out just to kill everything that's on the ground. Fertilizer is comprised of nitrogen and potassium, make up more than 99% of what they put on the ground. So less than 1% is actually targeting the crops. And everything that they put on the ground, including what's targeted to the crops, is not to the level of a skin sensitivity, meaning you didn't understand you had to get a rash or anything. So I just wanted to, for the record, say what we're putting on the ground is pretty mild and also very effective, because our fields are in quite good shape since we started these stuff.
So is this what, how we respond to that letter writer? Do we send the letter writer this information? We post it on the website? How do we address the concern? You know, there are people out there who would prefer that we never use any chemicals of any kind for any purpose, on any purpose.
Yeah, I'm happy to take advice after how to respond. And lots of people write letters about everything. I thought it was sharing a public meeting within a minute. It's going to be televised and maybe covered by the media, I think, does it. Implicit in what Steve shared too is if we didn't do this, like, there's a cost-benefit analysis, but there's an actual analysis, right? So there's the concern about this, but if our fields are in terrible conditions and student athletes and officials are twisting their ankles, it's a whole other, yeah, whole other concern. So I appreciate all the work Steve does and has done on this. It was bad a few years ago, and the grubs went nuts. And now the grubs are in check. And we talked about this online, but this is a similar approach that every school district in Berkshire County is using, and almost all of them are the same color.
I think what the problem was was the sign that the letter writer saw. Can you explain why that sign was there?
Well, the law states that they have to put signs down when they apply. They applied, on July 2nd, they did an application on the fields. And when they do the application on the fields, they have to put signs. And I have posted in the main office that we're doing it and what's being used and when. I have Carl contact, like even July 2nd, we're out of school. But I was thinking maybe they're like practice practices, so I reached out to Carl. I reached out to all the coaches to let them know we're applying this. It's advisable to stay out of field for 24 hours.
But what would also be helpful, if people do have questions, to reach our PD, Peter, Rob, as opposed to posting it to get their facts. Then if they, once they have the facts, if they want to drug a lot, they're free to do that. They just get the facts.
Welcome to America, Jack. Everybody's got a keyboard.
Thanks to Steve very much for your work on this.
Steve, what is, what do they do?
What's that?
What are they?
I have that actually in my office. I don't have it from that. There's like four of them. But I have copies of that, the SPS, so you can take them.
We have a placeholder for updates on diversity, equity, belonging. I don't have any updates right now on that. And I'm going to pass it back to Rob for some updated policies. Normally Cory might share them, but Cory's not.
I don't want to steal your thunder, Steve, if you'd like to. And I think perhaps we should take a break and everybody exercise their own, and I'm going to put you to sleep.
Oh, and Steve, I don't know if we want to do it now, Erica Milton's raised her name.
Sure.
Erica, go right ahead.
Thank you. I've been anxiously awaiting the DEIP section, Peter. I just wanted to point out that, you know, with all of the personnel changes, and especially at the highest levels in all three schools, I just want to make sure to call attention back to the really informative Stoke Collective report that outlines specific action steps and suggestions for each, for each school as well as the district overall, and especially as we still have that open position for the DEIP district-level position. It just seems really important that as part of these new principals, hi guys, coming on, that they are provided that. And I guess this is kind of just a little heads-up warning to Mr. Barnes that the high schools were, I'm really looking to get involved with my son there this year. So, yeah, I mean, these issues are really important to a lot of people, and it's been a rough time not having the correct DEI person in that position for the school year.
Yeah, no, agreed, and I'm glad you brought it up. As Colin sort of alluded to, with the admin team, we'll get everybody up to speed on that during the three-day retreat. The search is still open for the right person. And I also have a plan B, and I'll share updates on that if needed at our next meeting. But there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes too. Thanks, Eric.
Now, again, I always take these opportunities to educate because I'm a teacher. So the primary role of the school committee is to establish and periodically review education goals and policies for the schools and district, consistent with requires, laws, and whatnot. This is the primary role of the school committee. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees provides assistance by providing reference policy that's been reviewed by their lawyers, so we don't have to review with our lawyers and paper. All the policies under consideration this evening started as a reference models, but have been modified by this policy subcommittee to better reflect the needs of this district. Now, the policies governing, the subcommittee has been reviewing a group of interrelated policies over the past several months. This policy is supposed to focus on selection, the reconsideration, and the management of the structural materials. I don't think I have to mention why this has been a subject of this particular effort by this subcommittee. Several of the policies focus on the procedures for handling complaints about employees and structural materials. There's one outlier in this group, which is JDB, which is more of a housekeeping item having to do with our, essentially with our mountain-sized K-school and some technical things that have to be done to develop them in power score. So I review policies as listed in the agenda, with the exception of moving JDB to the end. So I'm not sure how we do it in this group.
So really, what we do, Rob, you've already given the instructions for that. This is the first reading, so we expect the school committee members to have read it. And if they have questions, we'll say to them, Rich wants to make a motion. But typically, what we do is we say, if you have questions or concerns, get it to either you, Peter, or Cory. And we'll come back with those concerns at the second reading, at our next meeting. Rich does want to make a motion.
No, I don't think I have that. I won't make a motion. Maybe I'll just wait and I can say now and then people look and ask, I don't know which one. So on policy.
Do you want to see first?
KC, correct. It goes to the composition of the committee in paragraph, new paragraph three. It looks like we're, my concern is with the addition of a parent, a school committee member, and a student, if age appropriate. You know, this goes to making what I think are core educational decisions. No one, the members of this school district, know the peril when non-educators are allowed to intervene in those decisions. And I feel like we're just introducing that here. Parents, while well-intentioned, generally are not educators. School committee members, the 1993 Education Reform Act did everything in its power to take all the school committees' powers away to intervene in educational decisions. I think that was a sound thing to do, and I think we should respect that sentiment. That's the way schools are run in Massachusetts. And the student is just beyond, I mean, that's, kids can't be setting educational policy for their kids. And I think you're putting a student, a young person, naively in a very difficult situation if this policy is invoked. So my amendment I intend to make is to strike that and have the committee made up solely of educational professionals.
But we will, that is reading, that is the second reading. Anyone else?
So, Rich, when we read this again, we should keep in mind what you've just said in regards to offering an amendment.
That's right. I won't make an amendment now, just for procedural reasons. I think you got to just amend. I'm just going to make this, strike those three. And if you want to add more educators to make up.
So you don't want a parent, a school committee member, or a student?
No. Librarians?
I'm not sure when we should discuss this, but I have some reservations about that.
We'll discuss it. We can discuss it now, but we'll also discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, well, I just think, I think it's good to get a viewpoint for more diversity than just the educators. I understand your point. I don't worry about, though, with the committee, that those three members be able to tilt against educators, okay? If it was a straight vote, you'd have the librarian, you'd have three teachers, there's four right there, and most likely the principal voting. So there's five. I don't worry about three other members swaying, whatever the controversy is in regards to materials. I think it is important that at some point, we did it during the hearing in January. We listened to parents. We considered that parents were kind of important in the process of what we heard. And I feel that as a member of the school committee, I think it's important that we give our viewpoint from where we sit. And I really think that the student is appropriate because that student might be able to explain why the material is important to them. And we heard enough students at that hearing that were very, very emotional about this whole thing that occurred. And I'm not sure they were listened to, that they said that they weren't being listened to before. So I think this is a move toward including students in at least the discussion.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's revealing numbers. I think any ad hoc committee that's formed in this district should be listened to all petitionings as we do. We have student members here, they don't vote. This is everything they say. If any student's ever come before this body for any reason, good, bad, or indifferent, it's heard, clearly. But they don't vote.
Right. Anyone else? Okay, we'll bring this back for a second. We think that we'll vote on it.
Right. Can I just go, we ordered here, we can start with IJ.
Yeah.
And are there any questions about, it was really two changes. What is the striking of the school committee and replacing with district? Because something that Rich just said is that essentially education is being, basically left to the professionals. And also, the other sentence in Reddit is basically designed to limit, limit challenges to materials that have already been adopted until three years after they have a shot at being implemented. Any questions on IJ? Hearing that, I should move on to IJR. This is the creation of, again, all these things are interrelated. Every one of these policies is somehow relating back to the issue of choosing material looking into personnel. And this one, again, basically, rather than taking the school committee out of a decision about the materials, it would be putting a standing materials review committee as being the folks who would address, basically, consider any complaints that have been drawn. Is there such a committee? No, at this point, no committee like that exists. This policy would start without committee, and that committee would actually reform sometime either, I think we had it, it's like, yeah. So the concept would be.
The point is to have a neutral committee in place in case there is a challenge, instead of trying to form a committee after the challenge.
Oh, so this is under referring to what Rich, you were talking about. Is it?
It is, yes, okay, yeah.
Well, that is the committee.
Okay, that's the committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the same issue applies, your issue of.
Mine is, I think there should be a committee. My issue is with the composition of the committee, yes.
And essentially, if Rich's suggestion is adopted, then it refers back to the state committee, that it's already decided what that committee. Are there any other questions about this, IJR? Then let's move to IJL. By the way, I'm very happy we don't have a PBL. I haven't looked at this evening, although that would have been quite appropriate. So then on IJL, essentially, you could see that we had, there had been some consideration of adding something that had been in another policy, but that got taken out. And one of the things, I just wanted to reiterate that neither the library and reader center nor the district serve as advocates for the ideas expressed in any materials. No one does the presence of any material indicate automatic endorsement. But it's the idea of intellectual freedom is one of the key things that we're trying to make sure is followed in all selection materials. Are there any questions about IJL? You see on the second page, Hornbook was replaced with Hurris. For those of us older people.
It's sad to see the Hornbook guy cast aside like this, yeah.
But, you know, times change, right? Okay, the next one, IJLA. The library media, the name has been changing over the years. You have, it used to be library, it's now it's a library media center. So, you know, the project is to reflect that, just add it centered. Are there any questions about IJR? Well, it's time to move to KDB. And this one is about complaints. Now, it used to say public complaints, but this is just, that kind of, the committee said, no, we should make complaints. Anybody who complains. And this is about district employees. And essentially, there's one bit of ad saying that opens up as in superintendent's, it's typically one will be procedures to ensure prompt attention. And if the complaint is about the superintendent, the school committee chair will develop the procedures. It's sort of a chain of command type of operation. Any questions about KDB? Any questions about K? Ah, it's time to go to the KEC, that Rich brought up, issue. And I've taken all the notes from that. This one has had some kind of major changes. But again, how, if the procedure is that folks will read this over the, between now and next. And by the way, for those of you who are not familiar with school committee policies, the way it's done, policies are typically read twice, in two separate meetings. Although I have had legal opinion that that can be altered by a school committee, they can see.
We have a policy.
Of course. I did not know that, I had not read that policy.
Yes. Policy.
Maybe we need to polish it about that policy.
Yeah. Now you're getting on something.
If there are no question, further questions about KEC, I will expedite this thing and move to the JEB. And this is just nearly, I, I had recommendation from the Manure Mountain schoolers wanting the addition, basically morning side has never been included, or excuse me, mountain side has not been included in the documentation, although it has existed at the high school for years. And for some reason, the schoolers recommended that this be added, just so what is the start date? And it is actually separate from the integrated three K, so is added. With that, I conclude my.
Any questions? Very well, we'll move on. Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah.
I heard that Corey next to me.
Um, children's and grounds Jason, have you mentioned?
Um, I'd like to, I'm a new chair. A new chair.
Really?
Jason has.
Has her.
No, no. Not at all.
The new school committee project is totally.
Yeah, he's been so young. Really? Wow. Shocked. We, we had an informal meeting, Diane, myself and Sarah, at the new, to be constructed.
Let me explain something, people. With the open meeting, well, there's nothing called informal.
Okay.
Okay.
We had.
I get enough trouble about.
Yeah, we had a meeting at, at what is going to be called the nature playground. And Steve can give us an update, what that nature playground, we talked about it at previous meeting, it was brought up, and we explained to the committee what our plans were. We then, at our meeting at the site, mapped out and gave you a series of photos, Diane can go into it a little because you included, your photos were also included, of what we envisioned it to be. And the purpose of it is, we felt it would be a perfect place after school, after the elementary school day ends, when parents are coming to pick up their kids, it could be a meeting place for parents to come to and to talk and to let their kids play. And we use that word, really, everything that play means. In the book, The Anxious Mind, which all of us read a chapter on how that's the, that's the self, what I call the self home policy book, basically, that this would be a chance for kids to play. They wouldn't be being told what to do, how to play, it would be totally free. And Diane, if you want to add to that.
Waters, sand, trees.
The, the staff, this would be no need to bring in people from the outside, the staff, as Steve said, has the capacity to do this, that are, that are energetic about it. The work is going to be done, it starts soon because of the vacation schedules that your staff has had. We envision logs, we envision a hand pump with water, sand, some things that have already been in place that you got through a program.
IPH.
IPH.
That does.
That some of the equipment is already there. So that's what the building and grounds committee has envisioned. And we, it, it's a wonderful idea, but, but we'd really like the idea that this would be available and it would help parents talk to each other more, et cetera.
This will be the, what do you call it?
Money brook, yeah. This will be opposite where the soccer field is, it's to the other side. I think, like, did we have a soccer field in school? No, on the other side of the soccer field. So you have the school, parking lot, then there's the soccer field, and there's a beautiful area that would be perfect for this. And it, and it actually has a structure, well, actually two structures. It has a platform there already and it has the basis of a sand pit. Okay? So I think it's, we thought all of it was a good way to do. That's the first report. The second thing is, this has been an, an ongoing complaint that I have heard from various people in the community about the roof fascia. And so I asked Steve to try to come up with a correspondent that a, a citizen from Great Barrington by the name Steve Hoff had written us as a school committee in March, I believe, about the roof. And so what I'd like to say is publicly, we have a response that Peter and Steve worked on, and that they sent to Steve about the appearance of the roof fascia. So I'm going to read a little bit about what Peter and Steve sent. "We consulted with Sherwin-Williams and there are seven layers of paint on the roof fascia. When we last tried to paint the roof, the paint only adhered for three months. The engineers analyzed the roof material and there is a chemical reaction with the old metal and all paint that keeps it from adhering. We explored prepping the current roof materials and the cost to do so and paint, and that was estimated at upwards of $2 million. The cost to replace all the metal fascia was closer to $4 million." The letter continues to say, "I know this is frustrating and the roof of the building looks bad, but we have invested significant resources in upgrading the inside of the building." And I have a list here for the, Steve prepared, just this, today, about all the things that have been done to the building at Manure Mountain. And when you go through it, and this is not just the beginning list, this is just, this is, this is hardly scratching the surface of what has been done to maintain and to keep Manure Mountain a good and safe learning environment. So that is the explanation of why that fascia looks the way it does, okay? And any questions that people have, they can get ahold of me, they can get ahold of Steve, and get ahold of Peter. I think it's important that this gets out there because it has been a, a prod on my side. People tell me, well, you've never maintained the building. They look at that as an example. Okay? That is building and grounds report.
Yeah. Super, super dense value, can you, haven't that yet?
No, but it looks like we're going to be on August 12th at 4:00 PM, and that'll be posted and shared with people, so.
Okay, perfect. Our finance subcommittee has had, and negotiations is on hiatus, a well deserved break. Personnel report.
I think I covered most of it at the beginning and there are a lot of stipends in there as well for summer, summer work.
Can I ask just a question on that? Kealan Harris was the, the assistant, second at the student services?
Yeah.
What, what is that?
She, she helps K.
Okay.
K bird, so.
Okay, okay, good, all right. Okay, oh, this is, update on MSBA at the end.
Yeah, sure. So we, we actually met yesterday, you know, both the design team and SCASG, product managers have been really rolling, steeling forward, I think, as far as building deeper into how we get the most for money and any of the apps we choose. We still have a free option to significantly add rental and then two new building sites, one right in front of the school, built into the hill, the other one pretty much where the parking lot is. They've been fine tuning those plans, you know, taking one of them from a three story to a two, two story, moving things around a little, just trying to maximize the dollar, try to, dollar cost as low as possible, really going through the fine tooth comb. Christopher just jumped on board, I appreciate it. Can you make this any more free? A big job, I thought, you really should, you know, no stone was unturned, I am down for this girl, let that, as far as maximizing, making sure every single corner, inch of that, whatever final plan is, is economically viable. Here, without, without even going deeper into the actual grounds, where the two possible new schools would go as far as, you know, which one would be financially more viable with regards to moving the monitor, et cetera. So things are, we're seeing along there. Our next meeting is August 21st, but at once, we're online as well as in person at 5:00 Wednesday. Yeah. All right.
Right. Any public comments? Raise your hand if there is. Steve, none. So we will now go into executive session pursuant to FGL chapter 38, section 21A1 to discuss an update on the physical medical provision of employee. We will not return to open session, so I need a motion.
Motion to go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Act of 38, section 21.
An update regarding physical medical provision of employee.
Some, so a motion to the second, this requires a little follow up. Anyways, Anne?
Yes. Yes.
Diane?
Jason?
I.
Bill?
Yes, Bill.
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I. It's unanimous, we will not come back and open session. Thank you, everyone.